Gloria, would you please take the call?
Trustee Cawthorn.
Here.
O'Brien Bergman.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
President Larson.
Here.
Trustee Thomas.
Here.
Whalen.
Here.
And trustee Zappa will be absent this evening.
All right, Chair, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of May 1.
I move that we approve the regular board meeting trustees meeting minutes as written on May 1st, 2007.
Any comments or corrections on the minutes? If not, all favor the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Any comments from the floor on any topics which are not a part of the agenda? No? Going once, going twice? Ron, you don't want to talk for a while? You don't want to talk about your fishing or something?
I'm sorry.
No, he's teasing you.
That's all right. We'll come back to you, I'm sorry. All right, moving along. Well, we are next, for crying out loud, extraterritorial. Final approval by Ron, we have a recommendation from the plan commission to approve the extraterritorial request submitted by Ron Tobias where he simply taking a section of land, breaking it down into a smaller section so we can transfer ownership to a family member. And is that, that's under the plan commission?
It is under the plan commission minutes.
There's also an application in the, under the first tab in.
What I'm looking for is the motion.
So it is here, the only difference is he has fulfilled the contingency of putting the drainage placement on the map and showing it, just so you know that that has been completed.
So would the motion be to recommend, to approve the two lot extraterritorial CSM for Ronald Tobias of the town of Hudson?
Carry it.
Okay, that's the motion I just made.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approving the extraterritorial request as recommended by the plan commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Ron, you've got a form that I guess I've got to sign?
Yes, sir, I did.
Oh, you got it here, all right. All right.
Can you make that a five?
Six five.
Six five.
All right, Class A and Class B licenses. Does this pertain to the Class A and Class B?
Not to the A.
Just the B? Okay. We have one Class A, a number of Class B licenses to approve. Historically, we've always approved them as a group, we don't have to name them other than by reference to this document. One thing that Gloria did want to point out is for the Class B licenses, we just need to include for all of them, some of them did it, some of them didn't, that their license is contingent upon a satisfactory health inspection report being submitted to the village. All Class B establishments are required to do that. So that will be a part of whoever makes the motion.
Would you say that contingency one more time?
It's contingent upon a satisfactory health inspection report being submitted to the village.
Okay, shall we start? Can I read the first one?
Do the Class A.
We'll start with Class A.
May I?
Or can we?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, dear. Thanks, Ron.
Can't we, can't we just approve them all as a document dated 5/14/07? Or do you got to do the A, Bs, and the rest of them?
The B requires that contingent.
Oh, the B requires that?
Health inspection report. A does not. Okay.
Okay. I move we approve the Class A fermented malt beverages intoxicating liquor license for a village liquor store. Kimberly White agent with an effective date of July 1st, 2007 through June 30th, 2008, as recommended by Administrator Gloria Trester.
I would second that.
Any comments or questions on it? Okay. If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carried. I'll do Class B.
Go ahead, Sir.
Nope, I did the A, you do the B.
I'll do the B. Motion to approve the Class B fermented malt beverages and Class B intoxicating liquor license for the Village Inn Sports Bar and Grill. Lee Halverson, Agent Malaloo Inn, Inc., doing businesses as Malaloo Inn. Peggy Malter, Agent Stars Bar, Inc., doing businesses Stars Bar. William Souter, Agent Xanar, Inc., doing businesses Idaho Chucks. Dee Paul Road, Agent. Lambden, Inc., doing businesses Mama Maria's Restaurant. Anna Marie, her agent. The Cabin, NH, Inc., doing businesses North Point, North Point Bar and Grill. Shane Benoy, Agent, and Zappa and Zappa, doing business as Mud and Suds. Dee Paul Road, Agent, with an effective date of July 1st, 2007 through June 30th, 2008, as recommended by Administrator Gloria Troyster. And it is also subject to a satisfactory health inspection report submitted to the village of North Hudson.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor of the recommendation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. The tobacco license sales?
Have these renewals also, the tobacco license?
Yes. Chair would entertain a motion?
I would make motion to approve the over the counter tobacco sales licenses for the Village Inn Sports Bar and Grill. Malaloo Inn, Stars Bar, Village Liquor Store. North Point Bar and Grill. Freedom Values Center with an effective date of July 1st, 2007 through June 30th, 2008, as recommended by Administrator Gloria Troyster.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Coin operated amusement licenses. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the recommended licenses.
I'll move to approve the coin operated amusements license for Malaloo Inn. Stars Bar, Village Inn Sports Bar and Grill. North Point Bar and Grill, and Muds and Suds with an effective date of July 1st, 2007 through June 30th, 2008, as recommended by Administrator Gloria Trester.
Second.
Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. All right. Plan commission, chair updates. I don't know, Terry, did you have anything that you want, any general topics? We have three in particular.
No. I'm going to go with one thing, the extraterritorial, this was approved, and the conditional use permits that you have on the agenda, which are recommended for people.
Okay. So if the board would just refer to the plan commission minutes. There's a recommendation from the plan commission that the board approve the amended conditional use permit for Carol Toring to operate Hillside Greenhouse and Nursery at 538 Sixth Street North. With the following conditions, hours of operations, 10 a.m. until 9:00, seven days a week, 365 days a year. All operations shall comply with federal and state regulations, local ordinances, and fire codes.
Is that your motion?
That could be the motion.
I'll second it.
Comments or questions on that? All right, all in favor of the conditional, the amended conditional use permit as stated in the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. There you go.
Thank you.
Edward Jones Investments. We have a recommendation to to the village board from the plan commission to approve the conditional use permit for Ann Hall to operate Edward Jones Investments, which would be a financial services office operating at 415 A Wisconsin Street. Hours of operation would be 8 a.m. until 6:00, Monday through Saturday. All operations shall comply with federal and state regulations, local ordinances, and fire codes.
I'll second, if that's a motion.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. And the North Hudson Village Hall, George, you can do this one. Amendment conditional use permit. Plan commission is recommending a conditional, the approval of a conditional use permit for the village of North Hudson. The reason for the plan commission even having to address it is because in our statutes, we treat municipal buildings as like any other building within the, within the village. The motion.
I see it on the last page. Terry moved.
Yeah, the recommendation of the plan commission is to approve the conditional use permit for the village of North Hudson contingent upon them addressing satisfactorily. Points made in Kevin Oyam's letter dated 16th with particular attention to resolving zoning implications and parking. Parking, I know, has been subsequently addressed with a letter from our attorney. Now, Rody added by friendly amendment that the parking issue would be addressed no later than one year after the completion of the building, once they find out how they're going to pay for it. Suggested wording from Attorney Schumacher to Rody that the parking requirements under the zoning code will be met by December 31st, 2008. Rody agreed, fell and accepted the friendly amendment. Amendment was approved by Schneider as the second, as the second in the motion carried. So what the plan commission is saying is fine, go ahead and build the building. And then it's your recommendation that the village convert that current lot to parking by the end of 2008.
Well, determine, determine how many parking spaces are appropriate. The code has a requirement, but through the Board of Zoning Appeals, that can be reduced. So we aren't necessarily recommending that whole lot be turned into a parking lot.
Okay. So what exactly is the, what would the motion?
I think I could do it here, if you wanted me to give it a try.
Take shots.
I move that we approve the conditional use permit for the, Terry, back me up if I say something wrong here. I move that we approve the conditional use permit for the village of North Hudson at 407th Street North contingent upon addressing, contingent upon the village addressing satisfactorily the points made in Kevin Oyam's letter dated May 16th, 2007. Further, that the parking requirements under the zoning code will be met by December 31st, 2008.
The question remains, how many parking, off street parking spaces? We ultimately won't be able to decide to add.
And.
Whether it's through the code or whether it's a lesser.
Right, but we can decide that by December, right?
But I don't think.
It'd also all be wrapped up by that. And that requires, off street parking requires a surface lot, a curb, we got it.
But so.
I don't think we should say by the code if it does continue, need to go to the zoning board. I think we should just say that it.
Well, your language said satisfactorily.
I think so. Addressed satisfactorily the points made in Kevin Oyam's letter dated May 16th. And Kevin, did yours cover the parking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is the motion clear? As well as the implications of the motion? I think the issue, as I understand it, is the village assembly needs to decide what it is we're going to do with respect to off street parking.
Right, and if you don't provide spaces for the code, then you have to build a zoning board.
And there seems to be some question as to which of the two provisions within the code applies. If this is a public space, public gathering, then it's one parking space per five person designed occupancy.
I think that's right.
Okay, I mean, I know that's what the code says. The other alternative is one per 200 square feet. So it kind of comes back to the question, I mean, what is a public gathering space? And in terms of looking, as our attorney has pointed out, the state is frequently having a rule on that issue in various circumstances or the courts, I assume. And they certainly have said that schools would fall into that circumstance. For the most part, we gather as a group. Probably the board, well, if you have a public hearing, you might get thirty, forty people here. Other than that, a typical board meeting probably has seven board members. Ten, fifteen people in the audience, you might have twenty, twenty-five people. Other than that, you have fifteen people during the day. Now, I found it interesting that the states would characterize schools as places of public gathering. So the high school, which I think has seventeen hundred, sixteen hundred kids in it, nine months out of the year. I'm not sure how they would characterize off street parking. Is it one per five people of occupancy being defined as the employees who work there, or is it the students? But fortunately, we don't have to deal with that. But our design occupancy here is six, is, I think, twelve, twelve or thirteen, maximum fifteen, so you'd probably say three. So I think that that issue needs to be resolved, and we can, at some point in time, deal with that satisfactorily, so I'm not terribly worried about that. Yeah. Absolutely.
Shouldn't he be using the mic? Because he can't even, you can't get to him on the camera.
Terry Fallon from the planning commission, 1010 Monroe Street North. And I think that I won't speak for the planning commission here, I'll speak as a citizen. I would be reluctant, I would encourage you to look at the parking requirements and attempt to downsize them. From the, if the rule that applies is the 200 square feet per one off street parking spot, I would like to see you look at downsizing that and getting the okay. So that the whole lot over here doesn't necessarily have to be turned into a parking lot. I, I don't think you want to jump to overkill on the parking.
That motion that Joe made has not yet been seconded.
No.
Go ahead, Gloria.
Do not wait till the second.
There should be a second.
We've asked, is there a second? Just so we can continue discussion.
I'll second.
Okay.
There's just a couple of words in the motion that I'm concerned about, and it just says further that the parking requirements under the zoning, the zoning. Under the zoning, is that request? I just want to make sure we're not saying we're going to follow the zoning code.
Right.
When we really should be saying we need to go to the board.
Which is exactly what Terry was just saying.
Well, that, that language also says we could go to the, to the board and feel, request variance, and say we want to do eight, ten.
I think so.
I think it gives everybody the latitude they're looking for.
Joe, in your motion, you included the eight points from Kevin's letter? Yes. I don't know, I included the eight points, I included, yeah. The points made in Kevin. Because those eight points that in Kevin's letter included comments on parking. And so I want to make sure that as we. Is his letter, is his letter included in our packets? Where did you find it?
Yep, it's, it's right behind the applications.
In plan, under plan?
Yep.
Joe, it's right before this big map.
I got it. Parking spaces shall be a minimum of, so he's given us the size. Yeah, I don't, if you're saying the, well, that's not part of the eight points though. So when we look at the eight points, number two. According to the letter, it doesn't look like there's any leeway in terms of the parking space requirement. Basically states it. But what I'm confused with, he talks about the proposed project, it's looking, okay, and then if you look, it says off street parking required, but that's not one of the eight points.
No, it basically, what it is, is just kind of highlighting, you know, as part of the zoning code in that R1 district, you know, what the requirements are. And one of the items in there was the off, off street parking. And I know there was, like what Larry was alluding to, there's two different categories in there based on floor, floor area or the designated space.
But Kevin, the reason that I'm bringing this up at this point is because as we review these minutes, and we go back and look at them, I want to make sure that we're clear that it's the eight points.
Yep.
And not the max and min and.
Sure.
Et cetera, that's above it when you're referring to parking. Otherwise, we're in real trouble. Because we will not be, we can get twenty-seven parking spaces across the street. That's max.
And just so you're aware too, you know, the eighty-three, eighty-three, eighty includes the first floor and the basement. So I think you need a little bit of guidance from, from Tom on, you know, how the floor space is actually, is it just the, just the floor space, the main floor space, not including?
But that would, that would be assuming we use that criteria.
Yeah.
As I read, went back and read the code after the plan commission meeting, my question was why are we looking at square footage? When we could just as easily be saying this is a place of public gathering, which uses a different criteria for determining the number of off street parking.
Yep.
Okay, which, you know, very honestly, should have been in, in your letter as well, to indicate that there's both, there's two options there to look at. And the only question that comes to mind, I think of, how do you define this place? And is it a place of public gathering? Or is it other buildings?
Yeah. I guess, you know, typically in the past, we usually looked like the muds and suds. They had a new addition that was put on, we looked at that area as per the floor space requirement. So we're just using some of the past experience that we've done in, with other businesses that actually have come forth. I know with the new grocery store up there, they were actually looking at it per floor space for the.
Well, when I think of a private business, I don't think of that as a place of public gathering. I mean, I realize it could be, okay? And the, and the courts have frequently ruled that that's church, school, municipal buildings in some instances. And several other places where people gather, usually for a brief period of time, but it does not appear to be a private, private sector owned enterprise. And if this isn't a public gathering place, I don't know what is.
Yeah, and I think that's some of the things that we struggle with a little bit at the, at the planning commission meeting too, because that was what was brought up also. And I guess that's kind of where we left it up to Tom to maybe do a little more research into that and see.
Which he has done, okay. All right, does it help at all to, in the motion, just add the word, do we need, do we need to add any words?
I think we probably should, so we have the flexibility.
Well, just so it's clear, it's points one through eight, not paragraphs one, two, and three.
I'd like Kathy to read the motion back.
Good idea.
That the board approved the conditional use permit for the village of North Hudson, Hudson Village Hall at 407th Street North contingent upon the village addressing satisfactorily the points made in Kevin Oyam's letter dated May 16th, 2007. And further that the parking requirements under the zoning, I had requests.
Zoning code.
Zoning code be met by 2008. See, and that's the part I.
December 31st.
Because we may not, we may be asking for a variance to go not meet those.
Larry's point was that under the zoning code, you do ask for, that's where you would ask for the variance comes within, that's one of the provisions of the.
Zoning code.
Okay, a different section, okay.
But we might want to put some language in there so that it is clear and we don't have to guess.
And the other thing, if we can add, I think you had the one other word, eight, instead of the points, the eight points, because then it makes it clear that. Yeah, that we're not talking about the prefatory lines with all the max and min's. Just to throw out, one of the things that we discussed at the plan commission meeting was that we were concerned with getting their approval on this. On this application for conditional use so that we could continue with the building. And when, and I believe I brought up, and it's in the minutes, that if we start putting too many contingencies on this, I said the whole, this whole project would come to a screeching halt. Which we can't afford to do because of time factor. And so by putting in the, by putting in that piece about the parking, you know, we're still going to go ahead with the building, but then it's up to this board to determine the use of that property. And to come to an agreement on what our zoning is going to be required.
Agreed. Did you get George's comments for the? Okay. But come back to George's original question. But come back to George's original question. Does, do we need to fine tune at all the motion, just to make sure that we are picking up specifically the items one through eight exclusive?
One of the other things that was at the planning commission, there was some question, I think Kevin came and brought that up, about what actually was the square footage? And then the other issue was, is it the square footage that we're dealing with, under that definition as another use, or is it the number of people because it's a public gathering? That's kind of an open question here at the moment, but the, and so there was discussion at the planning commission about those two particular issues.
And are we, I guess, I don't know if I can, if I can get down to the crux of the problem or not, we want to be clear that we may want to get a variance from the zoning code to put in fewer parking spaces than 200 per square.
You may not have to.
We don't have to?
We may not have to. I mean, as I look at the code book, it seems like, in listening to Tom, I mean, Tom was arguing, and I read his argument, which is, this is one of those where you interpret the code book 50/50. You can make an argument either way. Fair?
I'm not sure to be 50/50.
I thought, I thought, I read 50/50. You can make an argument both ways.
You can argue.
So if you said, this is a place of public gathering. Then the code says, you have one per designed occupancy, which would be how many people are designed to be in your home. It's never going to be more than 15. Okay, so that'd be three. Okay, so if that's our interpretation of the code, and we put five, five or six or seven parking spots over there, we've actually exceeded the requirements.
Yeah, okay.
I think that part of the confusion with which one to use developed, because when we were looking at sprinklers and some of the other things, we got a state opinion saying that we are, it's a business and we are in the business of having a hall. Well, so then they wanted to, they instinctively interpreted it as business, and that's why they went to have a square foot. But our business is a gathering place, and that's where, and the municipal building, and that's where we can use the one out of five.
Who makes that assumption?
Well, I assume that we're going to give you a written opinion that you can actually act upon at some point, but I think under Gloria's analysis, every business is a public gathering because public comes in there. I think the issue about this...
No, but this is our business, public gathering, this is what we do as our business is have meetings.
Tonight it is, but during the day it isn't, I mean, we do other things, we administer the...
But we're here.
For the public.
It is part of our business.
I think what, you did remind me though, that one of the other things that came up at the planning commission was that Elliot Anderson brought up, the architect, with respect to the sprinkler, was the issue about that if it's a public gathering space, then they're, under that definition, under the code, with respect to sprinkler, there may be different requirements, and that's why they had not gone that direction as far as defining it with respect to those purposes.
As we look at this facility, actually, let's talk about the finished facility. It actually is two very separate facilities. Facility number one is the one we're in right now. This, for the most part, is used, will be used in the evenings for meetings. The other half, we'll call it part number two, or section number two, will be used exclusively during the day. You'll have the police, one or two police or patrol people using it at night perhaps, come in, come out. But for the most part, we have an AM section and a PM section. And I'd like to see somebody try to clarify, okay, what is the occupancy?
Here's, here's my point.
Are you talking about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, or are you talking about 9 o'clock at night?
I, I would prefer to have this discussion on how many parking spaces that we have to provide for this conditional use permit to be answered by the board at a later date.
Agreed.
And is there anything about the motion that we've read that prevents us from doing that? We could, we could talk, until we get a plan, until we decide what we really want to do and then support that with either the bylaws, or the ordinance, or the state, or whatever it is, we could talk about this thing ad nauseam. And I want to get off the dime and just say, is there anything about the motion that prevents us from, from doing that at a later date? If there isn't, then I would like to call the motion.
I don't think so. All right. Do you have the motion in the second? Yes, we do. All right. So all in favor of accepting the planning commission's recommendation for an amended conditional use permit for the village hall, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Finance committee claims...
The motion that I read earlier?
You can do that.
I move that we approve the May non-recurring claims totaling $38,064.89.
Any other comments or questions regarding the bill? All right, then we'll do a roll call vote. If you're in favor of it, say yes, if you're not, say no. Start over here, Colleen.
Yes.
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
All right. Next one, resolution 207-04 is for anyone who's looking at your agenda, it's a formality. The state requires, for their records, less so for ours, that we actually pass a resolution indicating who is in fact our property insurance carrier. The state has informed us that they have been very lax in keeping track of those records, so they've asked all municipalities to update those. So I will recommend approval, and finance committee has already approved, recommended approval of the resolution 204. 207-04, I'm just looking for it.
In the finance.
I'll get there, I'll get there. The resolution that reads, resolved that from the, that from and after the 50th of June 2007, the buildings and other property belonging to the village of North Hudson be insured in the local government property insurance fund under chapter 605 Wisconsin statutes and amended thereto, whereas the clerk of the village of North Hudson is hereby directed to carry out the provisions of this resolution. Whereas this resolution is issued at the sole discretion of the village of North Hudson and may be amended or rescinded by a majority vote of the village board at any time. We included that sunset provision in it, just in the event we want to change insurance carriers because we can get a cheaper price, so. So it's a, that would be my motion to approve resolution 204, 207-04.
Second. Gloria, is it appropriate to share with the rest of the board what you told us about our insurance and our premium rebate?
Yeah, I was speaking with our insurance agent today, and he informed us that we'll be getting somewhat over $3,000 dividend back for being a long-term customer with the league and having a low, a low claims rate.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All favor the motion, signify, wait, do resolutions require roll call?
You can do.
You can do. If you're in favor of the motion, say yes, otherwise say no. Colleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yep.
Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yep.
George?
Yep.
Excuse me. Item C, authorization to purchase a tech writer that issued was tabled by finance, so there won't be any action or discussion on that. Authorization to purchase a vacuum cleaner, our current one blew up. So we need a new one, the original request was for an amount not to exceed 700, finance committee is recommending not to exceed 500. So that would be my motion.
Second. I trust that we will move with great dispatch on this.
Very likely. Comments or questions? We just felt, finance felt $700 was a little much for a vacuum cleaner. We wouldn't spend that, so why should it be? Other comments or questions?
This place gets vacuumed more than my house.
It does.
I'm just saying, vacuums cost a lot. A good industrial strength one.
Okay. All right, we'll have to do a roll call on this, so if you're in favor, say yes. Start over here, Sandra?
I'm sorry, I what?
We're doing a roll call vote to authorize a purchase of a vacuum cleaner not to exceed 500. Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe? Public Works?
The only thing that we need to talk about in Public Works tonight is the preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessments for Station Lane and Station Circle North and Summer's Landing. And I'll turn that over to Kevin from Cedar Corporation to kind of give us the, I don't know, history or background or get to the point.
All right. If you remember, at the last village board meeting, the village decided to go ahead with that particular project up there on St. Croix Station. And there were some discussions that there was going to be special assessments as part of the project. Fifty percent of that cost will actually be assessed to the adjacent property owners as part of the project. And preliminary resolution is just the intent to levy those assessments against those parcels, kind of as a beginning process. And it highlights the different areas that we'd be looking at. And I'll just quickly run that off from Station Lane North, beginning approximately 200 feet north of the intersection with Summer's Landing Road, then northerly to Station Circle North. Station Circle North from Station Lane North to Summer's Landing Road North. And from, and Summer's Landing Road North from Station Circle North to approximately 150 feet west of Pine View North. And there's about 28 different parcels that will be affected as part of the project, and they're spelled out in the assessment district. And gives us the go-ahead to start generating the preliminary assessment report, just like what we did on the Cratley Lane project. And then at the next village board meeting, we would be scheduling the public hearing and inviting all the public. They will get a copy of the report, according to state's statutes, that has to be sent out 10 days prior to that public hearing, and has to be in the paper as a class one notice. So, just kind of the beginning process of assessing those properties.
Kevin, in regards to the...
Assessments to the property owners, has a determination been made as to how corner lots will be handled? Is it just going to be an assessment per lot? Or is there going to be any special assessments for corner lots?
Have we talked about that at Public Works? You and I have talked about it privately, but I don't know that we've talked about it in an open meeting. And I'll just tell you what my thinking is.
Sure, just please.
There's a number of lots out there that have a lot of frontage, if you will. And some of them are, well, some of them actually are, even it's more than a corner, kind of wraps around in back of it. And, and I've looked at it a number of different ways, given the ordinances that we have, the conditions we have, because I think you can get, you pay the frontage, and then I think the 150 feet, you get free on the side or something, and then you build for anything over 150 feet. And looking at that, my view is, is the bottom line is this, every resident out there uses the road equally, regardless of frontage. I don't, I've talked to a few people out there, some who have the smaller lots and some of them obviously are the bigger ones. And so what I'm proposing that we do is we just divide it up equally among, take, take the, the cost of the, the project and the amount that we're going to assess, or 50% of the amount of the project is going to be assessed, divide that by the lot owners, and that's the assessment. We, that's within our right to do that. The only thing that I would add to that is, there are some lot owners who only half of their frontage is going to be fixed, the other half is not. And so I think we should prorate those people based on how much is completed in the front of their property. For example, if somebody has 200-foot frontage and only 40 feet of it is going to be replaced, then they should pay four tenths of what everybody else played, what everybody else pays. Is that muddy?
I mean, they have 100, 100-foot lots.
So, yeah.
No, I have no problem with that.
Is that an assessment policy?
What's that?
And it's within our assessment policy.
Actually, when the village board was looking at this project, you know, five, between five and 10 years ago, they were actually looking at doing those particular parcels on a per-unit basis, just like what you're talking about tonight. Instead of doing it on a per-linear foot, it'd be on a per, per unit or per lot.
Isn't that part of what is supposed to come out of the recommendation from the preliminary report from...
Yeah, that'll be all spelled out in the preliminary assessment report.
You know, one of the things when you're doing the assessments, you have to make sure there's a benefit to the property. And, you know, that's one of the things that's supposed to be part of their report as to whether they think the benefit is on a front foot basis, or a per-lot basis, or some other basis. That should come out of their report as opposed to us predisposing what the result's going to be.
Yeah, you do have that flexibility in your assessment policy.
They would have that report in time for the next, for that public hearing?
Yeah, that, the idea is, is that you have the report, file it, and then there's a period of time for people to review it, then have your public hearing so that they can come in and comment, and then the decision, a final resolution on how you're actually going to, you know, do the assessments comes after that.
Do we need a motion?
So you can see that resolution, resolution number 2007-05 in your packet. So I would move that we accept the preliminary resolution number 2007-05 as written.
Give me a second. Sandra?
So you can see that resolution, resolution number 2007-05 in your packet. So I would move that we accept the preliminary resolution number 2007-05 as written.
Give me a second. Sandra? Any other comments or questions for either Joe or for Kevin? Okay. Again, it's a resolution, so we'll do a roll call. Just state yes if you're in favor of the motion. Sandra? Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And do we have a date for that, the next document, so we can get it published?
Yeah, well, we'll be working with Gloria, making sure that we meet all of the requirements.
Yeah. My point would be, it'd sure be nice by the next public meeting that we have the next, which is in July, to be able to have a portion of that be the public hearing.
Yeah, that's what we'll be scheduled for, is the public hearing will be at the next village board.
Okay. So then the document and the report that you've got to get, the assessment report should be out, what, 10 days prior to that? And that will happen?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Kevin. And I'm done with Public Works.
Okay. Public Safety?
All right, I'll take these in the order that they appear on the agenda, in other words, item, I'll start with B.
In other words, item, I'll start with B. In your, in your packet, you did receive as part of the planned commission documentation, for the application for conditional use permit. You did get a copy of several pages of the most recent documentation that would have gone to the state, the Commerce, Wisconsin Department of Commerce for their approval. This again is only just three of the, I believe, twenty-five pages. So this will give you a little better idea of what the most recent version of the plan is. And you may want to refer to that or not as I go through a couple of the items. Also this evening, you approved the minutes from the last board meeting. And draw your attention to page three of those minutes. And I'll go through them one at a time to show you what our progress has been to date on the village addition. Down at the bottom, it says, "Building Management Committee will present a variance request to the Board of Appeals on May eighth." The Board of Appeals did grant our request. And so that was for just our boundaries. The, you know, there's only five-point-two feet from the back of the building to the fence or to the next property owner. And that was granted because as you look at the design, as you look at the plan, you'll see that the back of the building is in, of the new part is in line with the existing building. And so we were not encroaching any more than we were before, as well as a variance for the space in the front, which we need because we are getting a little too close to the street. And that's because of the, as you can see from the drawing, the, the addition stretches out a little bit further. Also to the, that'd be the south, it was granted based on the fact that there is a, a park on that side. So that was the Board of Appeals. We also attended the park board meeting on May fourteenth, and we discussed the design for the memorial park. And if I can, now, for this, Colleen, I'm actually going to be referring to the minutes of the park board that you'll be discussing later. But if you go to the park board meeting minutes, you'll see that there's quite a long paragraph there on the Veterans Memorial Park. And not even sure that that's the exact, is that the correct name? Is that what we will be calling it or?
We don't know yet.
We don't know. It's, okay, so that's my point, that we weren't a hundred percent sure on it when I saw the meeting minutes. And I went, okay, I guess it's the Veterans Memorial Park. But if you look again at the schematic, you'll also notice that there is a place in the front of the, in the front of this part of the building that would have that, that Veterans Memorial Park. It's basically a wall upon which placards can be affixed. You'll notice that John Helgason's name is in that motion. And John Helgason will be working with Elliot and myself after considerable discussion with the Vet- uh, let's see. I want to make sure I got who he's going to be working with, the veterans groups, for input on funding for the memorial. So that, that was our meeting with the park board. And let's see. Oh, yes, then there was the meeting with the plan commission on the sixteenth, and we have discussed that ad nauseam this evening. So, where to from here, you may ask? And that would be the following. Tomorrow morning, I got, I see the chief is here, and I just want to verify, do we have that meeting with CIT tomorrow morning? Okay, we're meeting with a company called CIT tomorrow morning at eight. They will be working with us on, or we will be discussing security. All right? Okay. On the seventh, that's, that'll be Thursday, we'll have our regular meeting. And Elliot will have some, some other things to discuss with us regarding the, I believe, the interior. On the fourteenth, we're working with Elerton, meeting with Elerton Associates here, and we'll be discussing the, I guess you could say, the parts of the infrastructure. The wiring, security, cameras, computer wiring and so on for the building. And that's where we are as far as the village addition in the plan. Before I go on, I'll ask if you have any questions regarding that topic. Time's up. Okay. Actually, there were a couple of things that we had, I just want to add a couple of the little sidebars as we go along. The bids have gone, the request for bids will be in the newspaper. Those of you who buy your paper at the stand, it'll be in the paper tomorrow. You'll be able to see it. Please check that. That was developed using your office time, as well as, it was somewhat, we're abbreviating that a little bit. That was kind of long.
It was kind of long, but I figured it's easier to take it out than put it back in.
It's what we were thinking. Anyway, the ad for the newspaper has gone in requesting for bids. And you'll see that, as I said, tomorrow on Thursday. We're also discussing certain things that, once the bids start coming in, if we see that we will not be able to meet our financial goals, okay, that lobby may go away. Much as we don't like that, that's one of those things that we may have to say, well, geez, too bad, but we can save X number of dollars with that not in there. You know, in the original plan, there was supposed to be an accordion door here. We found out just how expensive those accordion doors are. And the more we wrestled with that, the more we realized that at this particular time, we don't see any need for that door. So what the design is at this time is rough it, put in the rough-in, so that down the road, if another board, let's say five, ten, fifteen years from now says, geez, why didn't they put a accordion door in here? Oh, I see they thought ahead. We'll be able to put that in. And so there are several things along those lines that we're just looking at ways that we can meet our financial objectives without, without short change in the building and the people who have to work in it. So, I guess that's it for the village building. I see that Wally is here, and so is the chief. And of course Gloria, do you have anything that you guys would like to add to my comments about the? Okay? Thank you. I was just reading over your parking stuff. Quite an epistle. All right. Item nine C, it says fireworks permit, application to Freedom Value Center, approval requested. I'll make the motion. You have the issue statement. Move to approve the application for a Class C fireworks paraphernalia sale permits for Freedom Value Center as submitted. Subject to approval from the appropriate Hudson Fire Department representatives and with the following inclusions. No smoking signs must be displayed, fire extinguishers available, no fireworks sold to persons under the age of eighteen, and with times of operation as stated above, which is, and I did see them on here. Store hours coincide with store hours. Okay?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions regarding the fireworks permit? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried.
The next item is just a, well, I'll read it and then, then we can talk about it. Move that we approve the purchase of one PBT unit and testing solutions that it costs not to exceed nine hundred dollars.
Second.
What I want to make clear on here is that we have been awarded a card grant, which provides for the purchase of one of these PBT units. Any questions or I could ask Mark to see any need to add to that?
Just procedurally, we need to buy it and they need to reimburse us for the grant?
Question, do we have one now? Are they, do we have one of these now?
We do.
Okay. We need more?
Yes, this is the...
We keep using them.
It's one of those things where we have, we have one unit in each squad and...
In each car?
Correct, in each car.
Okay.
And the, the PBT units that we have, there are several of them that are older. And with every year that we get this card grant, we try to replace the older units with the newer units. And I believe we have two, two of the older units left to kind of work out of the, out of the system. So we'll have, this one would replace one of the two, and then next year, we anticipate the card grant again.
Are they more precise, the newer ones or?
They're more precise. They self-calibrate, so there is less room for, I guess, human error, those types of things. It also detects mouth alcohol, or residual mouth alcohol. And so you don't get false readings like you can in some of the older units.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Any other questions? Okay, since this is a spending motion, we'll do a roll call. If you're in favor of the motion, just simply state yes. Colleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yep.
Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Larry, yes.
I'm done.
Public Welfare?
Okay.
Ending the report?
I do indeed. Keep this relatively simple. We had a welfare meeting on the seventeenth and talked about animal issues briefly. We are going to possibly look into adopting an ordinance to pass uncollected charges onto the tax roll in the future. We're just basically trying to get the village residents to realize that with the responsibility of owning a pet, responsibility to your neighbors and the citizens in the village also comes into effect. Our spring leaf collection, which was put together long before I chaired the committee, went off without a hitch. That was wonderful. Gloria's done a great job. I didn't realize until recently how much of that is subsidized by the county. So that's wonderful. We are going to be working on the oh-eight budget for this so we can get in applications. And the only other topic that we covered and we will be doing more with is the potential as people are becoming more and more recycling conscientious. Waste management has offered or suggested that we look into larger recycling containers. My con- conversation was how can we do this without incurring any more costs? And although this is in the very preliminary stages, what the initial recommendation is, is a container similar to that large fifty-five-gallon container that everybody currently has, only marked in a different color. It would basically handle about four times the amount that is carried in the totes. And if they were able to pick this up on a by week, every other week basis, we would be able to recycle twice the amount and still not incur any additional costs. And they feel that's possibly feasible. So we'll look into that a little bit more. And other than that, we've had a couple of issues with some properties that are being less than perfectly maintained in our beautiful little village. With Mark's help and Gloria's help, we are trying to stay on top of that so that we can keep everybody in the village proud of their neighbors. And we will be working in everybody's best interests. And with that, I think I have nothing more to offer, unless I missed anything, Gloria? Good.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Park Board?
As George talked about with, we'll be working, getting the Veterans Memorial set up here, which we figured was a much more appropriate place than Webster Park. And the other main thing we're working on is just updating the park plan, outdoor recreation plan, which is part of, which is due this year. And our tour of the parks was rained out twice, so.
It was what?
Rained out twice. So we'll just be looking at those on our own.
So it didn't happen last night?
No, we timed it perfectly. The rain came five forty-five.
It was raining, huh?
Well, that's it. Oh, actually, it isn't it. We do have a motion for the hiring of the lifeguard for Brown's Beach. One lifeguard has contacted Public Works Supervisor Mark Ekblad to return as a lifeguard this summer. The other two hired last year do not intend to return. So I would like to move to authorize Public Works Supervisor Mark Ekblad to hire two new lifeguards and the one returning lifeguard for the summer of two thousand and seven, with final selection approval from the North Hudson Park Board.
I would second that.
Any comments or questions? Okay. I think we have to do a roll call on that. We'll start over here. If you're in favor of the motion, just state yes. Colleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Larry, yes.
When did they open up the beach so we can have the lifeguards?
Anything else? Colleen, okay. New business for the board of staff. Just under point B, there is a seldom media, there is a committee that seldom meets. It's called the Hudson Area Sewer Service Plan, consists of St. Croix County, City of Hudson, Village of North Hudson. I think, St. Joe, Troy. And we need to name two representatives to it. Historically, there's been the village president and the supervisor of Public Works. And I've talked to Mark Ekblad. And they have notified us, although, although this group has not met for, since two thousand and one. It only meets periodically when something needs to be dealt with within the sewer system. Hudson annexed the property down on F, which is going to be used for the school. And so that will now, that expands the boundary.
Those forty-two acres I talked about.
So it expands the band, boundary of what was in the original sewer definition. So this group has to meet to recommend approval of that, that I think it actually has to be approved by somebody else. So I'm just recommending that the village president, and myself, and the supervisor of Public Works, Mark Ekblad, be the village's two representatives to the Hudson Area Sewer Service Plan.
If that's your motion, I'll second it.
That's my motion. Unless anybody else wants to do it, you can do it. Don't takers?
Going once.
Going once, it's going twice?
It's yours.
All right, all right. So all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Good, now we appointed Colleen for that, right?
Yes.
That's what I heard.
That's what I heard.
Colleen and her, and her husband.
I don't know if John's going to be busy that night.
He'll bring the kids with him.
Did you want to say anything about the border review?
Oh, yes, the border review met to adjourn, which is kind of strange, but the border review has to meet, we did meet...
About two weeks ago, I think.
Yeah, about two weeks ago. And our intent right now is to reconvene in July. Remember what the date is?
Twenty-sixth, I believe. The open book will be the twenty-fifth and the board review will be the twenty-sixth.
And is the open book pretty much all day?
No. No, it's from four to six.
Four to six.
It's on our calendar.
Okay.
And on the twenty, that's twenty-fifth is the open book, from four to six, and the border review is from five to seven on the twenty-sixth.
Okay. I have nothing else? Do you have any comments? Okay.
I move we adjourn.
You can do it.
I have a calendar comment.
Yes.
I noticed that our, our July meeting is the evening of Tuesday, the third. And the fourth being on Wednesday, that's kind of a semi-holiday, or the holiday, but... I'm not sure that I'll be here, so I thought maybe we could take a, a little poll to make sure we have a call.
Which dates are you talking about?
July third.
July third.
Oh, July three.
For the board meeting.
I may or may not be here.
I'll be here.
I'll be here. I'll be here.
Okay.
I'll be here. The problem with trying to move it to the following week, that'd be the 10th, is we got the board of zoning appeals. Then you'd have to bump that, or then you'd have to do it in June.
I'm just, I'm not requesting that, I'm just making sure that we-
No, I was just, it's a, it's a very good point.
I foresee that.
Is it a problem for staff?
I wish I wouldn't.
I might be having a party. I don't know, I haven't decided what to do with that one.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Yes. I second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.